...to order, this is the Winnetka Village Council Regular Meeting for January 8th, 2019. I would like to ask everybody in the audience, including myself, to turn off or mute your cell phones or other electronic devices. And we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and Trustee Wedner will leave us at that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Rob, you want to go ahead and check the forms?
Certainly. Next week, regular meeting, January 15th, all look okay. January 22nd, Scott, I know this is tentative, still coming together, I know you're going to be out of town.
I'm out.
You cannot, okay. That helps in understanding whether we can move forward. Anybody else on that date? Okay. And then February 5th, regular meeting.
Yes, so I will be out.
You'll be gone.
I'll be gone, definitely.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Item number four is public comment. This is the time of the evening when anybody from the public who wishes to address the village council may do so by coming up to the microphone and stating your name and address and sharing with us your thoughts. Does anybody wish to speak in public comment this evening? Liz, go ahead.
I know, I brought a prop today. Put it down, sorry. Hi, I'm Liz Conkell, 1303 Holly Lane, resident, head of Go Green Winnetka and Environmental Forestry Commissioner. And I wanted to say Happy New Year and thanks to President Rins for highlighting in your year in review in 2018, two of your top three were environmentally related. Needless to say, I love to see that. It was the permeable pavers and the signing of the adoption of the GRC II. And so it was just exciting to see that be recognized and appreciated as something great that the village did last year. So, thanks. And then I wanted to follow up specifically on an interesting issue that I know on the agenda tonight are the approval of the trucks. And I know at the last meeting in December, Trustee Wedner and apparently some other trustees expressed some interest in revisiting the idea of a pay-as-you-throw refuse program. And I had had the same thought. We talked about it a little bit at the EFC meeting in December to understand sort of the pricing mechanism. And I am one of those families that don't travel a lot but generate very little refuse. And because of the timing of the holidays and the refuse pickup this year, I wanted to provide a really striking example, if I may. So pickup this year was, or December, January was on the Wednesdays in my area. So it was the day after Christmas and the day after New Year's. On Wednesday, the 26th, we had all of our, I was able to just turn it all around. So all the recycling was out. Wednesday happens to be our pickup for the pickup compost service that we use, and I paid for an extra bucket that day. So we had 10 gallons of food scraps that were picked up on Wednesday, the 26th, one and a half 90-gallon recycling bins, because we happen to have a second one, and then one 37-gallon can of refuse, which probably wasn't full of garbage, but some refuse. And then a week later, we had one full bin of recycling, 90 gallons. We had no food waste. We had some food waste, but it wasn't picked up. We get picked up every other week. This is a bag of plastic bags that I'm going to take and recycle at the grand when I leave from here. That's this bag. This was my trash. This was my refuse that I generated in one week. And granted, I'm careful about it, but I'm not crazy. I'm not. I'm careful about it. I pay attention to sorting out food waste and the styrofoam, which we allow for in Winnetka, textiles and all of this. This is what I generated in a week, and I'm paying twice now, almost, what I did for my trash pickup in 2017. So I would prefer to have a pay-as-you-throw program so that those of us who are doing this are not subsidizing people who are paying for 75 gallons a week. And it just was really striking. Like I said, the timing made it really interesting. I could track it really easily. This is our garbage every week. I don't need a weekly pickup. I don't, I don't, I need maybe a monthly pickup. And I'm not alone. Again, I know I'm at the far end of things, but it's, I'm not, I'm not an aberration. This is the way we need to be going. And today's meeting at Go Green Illinois focused on zero waste and a lot of food scrap collection issues were part of that. A lot of communities are actually starting to do their own onsite composting. They're not even outsourcing it to private companies. They're just recognizing the value of mixing it with their municipal waste and dealing with it. And I think long-term, that's something that the village can look at. And again, big picture, thank you for what you're doing. We just need to keep doing more of it. And I'm going to say waste to energy. I want to think about it in Winnetka. We have a power plant. It's not going to be around forever. We don't want it to be coal-fired forever. We should be thinking about waste to energy. I know it's a long-term thing, but I want to put it out there. And finally, on the EFC, we're revisiting the GRC II tomorrow night. It's our regular meeting, and I believe we're getting in front of the trustees hopefully sometime in February to report our recommendations. But we're sort of, you know, narrowing those down as to what, how, what form they'll take. And I know coordinating with you guys as to when that presentation will take place. So I know some of this is part of that larger conversation, but also, don't wait. We all need to be doing it all anyway, in whatever way we can. So, thanks. And thanks for the extra time.
Thanks, Liz. Yeah, we'll be talking about refuse in the spring. The pay-as-you-throw concept, I guess, will be part of that, among other things. And, you know, certainly, it always amazes me when I, when you tell me about this.
Literally, this, less than this, less than this by volume. And it was, and it's all plastics, you know? It's all the packaging that I can't get away from. You know, if I lived in California, I might be one of those people who took my glass containers to a store. But that's a big deal, and I'm not there, and none of our stores are there. It's not an option here. So it's all that kind of packaging, which again, we can also work on in Winnetka and other communities and municipalities are figuring out how to deal with, you know, disposable waste, single-use waste and things like that. One last thing I'll say on composting is most municipalities recommend not making it optional. Because the optional rate is keeping it at about a 1% to 4% subscription, but when you make it optional, if you, if you start charging for compost like you do for refuse, you're going to be turning some things around. People will start paying for that. It's, it's, you'll see, I mean, it's amazing. Once you, once we dig into it, and we'll see how it plays out on the list of priorities and things like that, but it's, there's, there are a lot of different ways to get at it and make a dent in it. And we can figure out what works for Winnetka.
Right. And by the way, we are not coal-fired in Winnetka.
Awesome. That's honestly, most people think that, so thank you.
We're steam turbine generators. And actually, we'll be talking about that a little bit later, right, Brian?
I'll try to stick around for that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. One, one quick clarification is, it's not that our, you know, we're charging twice as much for the trash now, it's just that rather than, you, you see it. It's transparent because you're paying for it in user fee rather than in your property tax base, so, just to be clear on that one.
Great. All right, would anybody else like to address council on matters not on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we will close public comment and we'll move on to reports. Trustees, we'll start with Penny.
The Saturday conversation we'll be having, not this Saturday, which is the second Saturday, just the holidays have screwed us all up. So it will be next Saturday, that's good, on the 18th, is that right? 19th, 19th, so.
Great. And who's joining you?
To be determined, whoever would like to, so we'll talk about that later. Thanks.
Great, okay, thanks, Scott. No report. Rob?
Just reported on last night, we had the Landmark Preservation Commission, and next week, I think, are the Landmark Preservation Awards.
Great.
And most of the commission will be here, and I think that the chairman of that commission, Louise Holland, wants to say a few words to the council.
Sure. Okay. Thanks. And she's not shy about that.
No.
Ann?
No reports.
Andy?
Uh, no report.
I just wish everybody a Happy New Year and look forward to a very productive council year, so, thank you.
Let's hope so. Thank you. Village Attorney?
No report.
Village Manager?
No report this evening.
And Village President, I just have a couple of things that I wanted to bring up. One was, and I mentioned this to Rob before the meeting, we all got this, we all get this IML review in our mailbox once a month. And on the inside cover, there was this advertisement, not an advertisement, but the IML is offering what they call a grant finder. And what this is, is just a managed database, I guess, that will identify potential grants that are accessible to communities based on the search criteria that we enter in. While the license is discounted to 495, as an IML member, we get one license for free before we have to pay. The usual value is 1,200 bucks. So I've asked Rob if he would be willing to appoint a staff member who could interact with this and, you know, start to compile potential grants, whether it's for stormwater, revitalization, sidewalk replacement, or whatever, you know? There's a lot of, there's a lot of money out there. And part of the art of that is just understanding what's available. And then, you know, if it's worthwhile, we could put the resources forward to go ahead and pursue it. But I think it's good to at least understand what's out there and, you know, maybe we can find a few bucks that we never knew enough about before, so. Like to see us get that kind of going. And Rob will put somebody on that, and hopefully we'll have a good report on that in the future. And that's it. So we'll move forward. Okay, item six, approval of the agenda. I have some thoughts. This is completely unusual for this village council. As I told Rob earlier today, I've, I've been, you know, I, I attend a lot of other council meetings, and I see the way other people run meetings within the, with, still within the realm of Robert's rules. And, you know, it occurred to me that when we have opportunities to tighten things up and move things along, maybe we could do that. So I have two things. The first one would be to move, hold on here now. Got two items. And Ann, this is much to what you mentioned when you walked in the door. To move item 8B and 8, I'm sorry, item 8A and 8B to the consent agenda. These are both resolutions to adopt the final plats on, plats of consolidation that we've already heard once already and previously approved. So unless somebody has a real problem or really wanted to dig into these things again, I think it would be easy enough to move those onto the consent agenda. And secondly, you know, Brian lives out in Egypt somewhere. And...
That is a long drive.
And, you know, if, if we were to move those two items up to the consent agenda, then I would also suggest that we move both of the items related to water and power up to the front of the line, so Brian can present those and get out of here, and then we can move forward with the balance of the agenda. So I guess what I'm asking is if anybody has a problem with moving those two resolutions to consent and reordering items, help me out here, Rob, which items am I moving forward?
Yeah.
8A and 8B to the consent agenda, and items 10A and 10...
Actually, 8D.
8D and 10A to the front of the line. Does anybody have a problem with that?
Some moved.
Okay. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda's amended. Now we'll go ahead and move forward on the consent agenda, and I ask the village clerk to read the items on the consent agenda.
You need to ask for a motion for the final form.
Oh. May I have a motion to approve that final form of the agenda?
Some of...
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Thank you. Consent agenda, approval of village council meeting minutes, December 11th, 2018, study session, and December 18th, 2018, regular meeting. Approval of the warrant list dated December 14th, 2018, through January 3rd, 2019, in the amount of $588,429.58. Resolution number R1, 2019, GIS server, GIS Service Provider Agreement for Adoption. Resolution number R2, 2019, purchase of a pickup truck replacement for adoption. Resolution number R3, 2019, purchase of refuse scooters for adoption. And resolution number R4, 2019, approving a fourth amendment to a license agreement with new singular wireless PCS for adoption. Also, resolution number R5, 2019, 319 and 321, Sheridan Road, Godin's Consolidation Final Plat for adoption. And resolution number R6, 2019, 383 and 391, Hawthorne Lane, T&amp;J Leopold Subdivision Final Plat for adoption.
Great, thanks, Rob. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by omnibus vote?
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfear?
Yep.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Great. So if you were here for Godin or Leopold, you're done. Have a great evening.
You don't have to leave.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's been long enough, right?
Thank you both. See you, gentlemen.
Okay, so now we are moving forward to...
8D.
8D, resolution number R8, 2019? We're up to eight already? Wow. Approving a contract with Independent Mechanical Industries, Inc. for brickwork repairs to boiler number five, and this is up for adoption. An unexpected boiler repair was discovered at the electric plant during a routine calibration project on the unit. Here to review the problem and propose solution is Water and Electric Director, Brian Keys. Brian?
Thank you. Happy New Year, everybody, and thanks for the change of order. As, so as, as mentioned by President Rins, so during fall maintenance work in the November, late November, early December timeframe, we identified a problem with boiler number five. And with, as you are well aware, the, the timing of the budget cycle, we're already, the budget's already basically presented, locked and loaded at that point in time. So I have what's now, at this point in time, an emergent repair that I'd like to make in 2019. It's a, the estimated cost is just short of $50,000, and it's on boiler number five, a 1938 unit. It's one of the four natural gas-fired boilers at the plant that were, in its former life, previously a coal, a coal unit. So while making these adjustments or calibrations, we call it tuning of the boilers, they found a problem and suspected some internal airflow problems, and so the boiler was taken out of service, and we went into the boiler and determined that some refrac, what I'll call some refractory damage existed, but more importantly, is some baffle walls were deteriorated, actually fallen. So we had two firms that we've done boiler work with before, Independent Mechanical, you've probably seen that name on the warrant list, they've done a lot of boiler work for the village, and also American Combustion. Come out and go into the boiler, and then, when I say go into it, we took it apart and you're going through a little, some, let's just say, some, some individuals might not fit through it, is how my staff tells me. Going into the refractory, or the burner box of the boiler and looking at it, so we had the two companies come out, both have done, as I mentioned, work, and surprisingly enough, their bids were, on a proposal basis, were very close and aligned, at just shy of $50,000. We would like to move forward with this, but in the effort of keeping the budget aligned with what you've approved from a cost perspective, I identified three projects. And what I'm proposing is we would, one project, which is valve work, we would hold off on 50% of the work scope that's in the budget, and the two other projects would be delayed till the fall. I don't see, currently, you don't believe it'll impact our summer generation, and what I'd like to do is hold those in forbearance until the fall, and that we would then look and revisit the budget adherence in the fall, and if we can still, within the allotted budget that's approved by the council, complete that maintenance work. We'd complete them. If not, and we're trending tight to budget, then we would reprioritize those projects for consideration in the 2020 budget. So the, with the assistance of the village attorney, resolution 8-2019 would waive the formal bidding process and allow us to enter into a contract with Independent Mechanical, and I'd be happy to take any questions. One last piece would be, we're looking to complete this work before the summer generation season starts.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do. So this is, was an unanticipated expense. Was this part of, like, the five-year thinking ahead, or was this a completely unexpected?
So we do tuning almost on an annual basis, but this was really unexpected. The boilers are inspected by the village's insurance company on an annual basis, and so the boiler was, gets inspected annually. The depth of that inspection, what's required, what they do, I don't know if they would have caught this before. A very detailed, like, formal lifecycle assessment was done in 2011 by the village, where they went, you know, top to bottom on the tubes and stuff. And in the budget, interestingly enough, one of the other budget items that we're looking at is that lifecycle analysis of one of the other boilers. So I guess, depending on what we find on that boiler, we'll have to revisit how frequently those life cycles are done and in condition with their annual boiler inspection.
Just, you know, throwing it out there, and obviously something to be considered as the budget year moves on, but, you know, I would not necessarily be opposed to, I mean, because this wasn't anticipated. I mean, these other expense, these other repairs are something that you'd planned on doing as, as the routine maintenance. So, you know, seeing how things go, it would be nice if we could do everything that you'd planned on doing, plus this emergency repair, so.
I'm, I, what I'm trying to do is balance the expectation that we meet budget...
Right.
And to the point that if we come in on track, these items that I've identified, I've reviewed with my staff, we, I mean, we view, I mean, not that unplanned other, unplanned events won't happen, but we view as we could still potentially get this work done in 2019 if the budget tracks favorably on our other expense items.
Good.
I think President Rins, when I left the last meeting, you said, well, you're starting off the track on, under budget on one item, and I'm like, yeah, next month I'm going to be in there on an over-budget item, so.
Right, right.
So I guess, we're trying to find that line where we're meeting your expectation and meeting budget, not making poor decisions on deferring maintenance...
Yep.
And saying that we'll bring this, hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to complete this in 2019, but would delay it to the fall window instead of trying to get done before summer generating.
Okay. We're thinking on the same track. Thank you very much.
Can I just ask a question, not about this, I'm supportive of all this, but just in terms of future look and what Liz was bringing up, you know, you, I think, said that the boilers are from 1938, and soon that'll be 100 years old. And so is there an idea that maybe we would look at using food, converting it to energy, and replacing the boilers along that line? And can we think about, I mean, maybe it's a 20-year-out project, but just to sort of recommend or have thoughts on that, which are we going?
Well, there'd be, there's a handful of, where to begin? That's a great, that's a study session topic, probably, but the short answer is not in the five to 10-year plan to revisit that. And the path that we're currently on would be is making sure that the village's electric distribution system maintains the same contingency by making substation improvements. So at a time when it becomes uneconomical, or when we don't get paid the amount of the $1.2 million in credits, that you can step away from being a generating member or a generating company and still maintain the same electric system reliability. To, to make changes, there would be, without knowing exactly what Ms. Conkell is envisioning with the, the waste, using waste for fuel, there'd be several things, including a very extensive air permitting process. And as some of you know from what we've been going through, we just, we finally just received our most recent air permit renewal. That would require re-permitting, and it would also require some contract discussions with IMEA in the short term. So there, it's, it's something we can poke at, but it's, would say there'd be several hurdles to successfully doing that economically in the near future.
Brian, just as a reminder, the IMEA contract, how long are we locked in?
The village is locked in as a requirements contract to purchase power through 2035. You, as the owner of the generating plant, with sufficient notice, can elect to stop generating at your, at the point in time when you make that decision. That's not a requirement that you stay a generating member. As I mentioned, right now, the combined diesels and the steam get a capacity credit of a little over $1.4 million a year.
Right. As long as we generate, the credits are available.
As long as we generate, the credits are available.
But how much beer could we generate if we turned it into a... You get off that. I'm not letting go of it! Bone go! Winnetka beer.
I, I can, Ms. Conkell and I have spoken on some other environmental initiatives, I can, if she's interested in having more discussions, I'd be happy to meet with her offline, and we can kind of frame up some of her thoughts and see if there's some avenues to explore.
That'd be great. There are others in the village who would be curious, too.
Biodiesel, right? So, any other comments or questions for Brian? Are there, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Hearing none, we'll bring it back up to council. And since there was no discussion, I'm just going to ask that we have a motion to adopt resolution number R8, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfear?
Yep.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Okay, now we get to get our hands dirty a little bit. Item number 10A, request for additional cell antennas at 410 Green Bay Road. The village has received a request from Verizon Wireless to place additional antennas on the Public Safety Building monopole at 410 Green Bay Road. Village staff needs council direction on whether it wishes to approve the request before they can move forward with lease negotiations and terms. Oh, we get a twofer here. Here to review are Brian Keys and David Shown. Take it away, guys.
All right, thank you. So the gender report before you outlines basically an unsolicited offer from Verizon, so they actually came and approached staff about installing cellular equipment at the Public Safety Building. There's a monopole located, which is at the 410 Green Bay Road site, and we're looking for some policy direction on whether you want us to continue trying to move forward with putting additional antennas on, or if you're satisfied with status quo and we should politely decline. David, now, as mentioned by President Rins, we're going to tag team this. I'm going to walk through some of the equipment considerations and the site layout, and then David will move forward with talking about the zoning relief that would be required to accommodate it. The, the cell sites are located at the Public Safety. The existing one is New Singular, and it's what we call macro sites. So it's not to be confused with previous discussions that Village Attorney Friedman and I had with you on small cell sites that are on streetlight poles. We have three macro sites on village-owned equipment. So there's two at the power plant, so New Singular or AT&amp;T, and Verizon have antennas on the exhaust stack, and then also equipment shelters on the third floor, the upper level of the power plant. And then currently at the Public Safety Building, New Singular has antennas on that monopole, and then they actually have a leased room in the basement of the Public Safety Building. Annual revenue for each of those sites is around $70,000, so we're looking at nominally about $214,000 for the three sites on an annual basis, and they both have, they all have, each contract has escalators of 3% to 4%, so that does increase. That's as opposed to the, the $200 that we, under state law, are capped at getting for when they put something on a streetlight pole. So they, Verizon approached about co-locating, and we've had a handful of preliminary meetings, including of which I've engaged Public Safety Chief specifically, Chief Hornstein, because it impacts his building more, discuss what feasibility we could do without impacting their operations or making it a detriment to their use of the current site. The request is basically is to move two existing antennas, and these are shown on page 169 of Tower Diagram, but one of the two antennas is no longer in use with the radio frequency changes that have been made. And one antenna would either have to be incorporated into Verizon's design or moved to another location to accommodate nine antennas and associated equipment like surge protection and tower mounted amplifiers. So they would put nine panel ample, panel antennas up, similar to what's already there with AT&amp;T or what we've agreed to at, down at the power plant. Unlike the, the power plant or the existing site, they need room for an equipment cabinets. There's not currently room in the building that the police chief feels that could be given up without impacting their operations, so we'd need to cite an equipment cabinet on the exterior of the building. The cabinet would sit on a four-foot by four-foot concrete pad. It would be roughly, the, the box itself is nominally around three feet square. And I think, to clarify something, or correct a mistake in my report, it would be seven feet tall, so 84 inches above the pad. And there's a picture of what one of those cabinets will look like on page 170.
I'm sorry, how tall do you think that was?
It'd be three by, it's like 32 by 39 inches, as far as the length, the width.
Yeah.
due diligence, but before they make this investment, a full structural analysis to make sure that the existing monopole would support the antennas and equipment. And then also, we'd have to look at what screening requirements the village would want. The proposed location for a cabinet would be in the, the island, the landscaped island area behind the retaining wall, right next to the existing monopole now. And it's shown on page 171 of your packet to give you kind of a sense of, of an area where the equipment pad could be located, in the equipment cabinet. There's been no specific discussions on term length or the financial amounts, but it was articulated to Verizon that it had to be competitive. And Verizon, as I mentioned, has already an existing lease agreement, so they know the structure of the agreement that the village would be looking for, because we already have a, an agreement in place at the power plant. And with that, I'm going to ask David to walk you through the zoning relief that would be required, and then we'll close with any questions you have for either of us on the discussions we had so far with Verizon.
So again, given that this is village property, you have the decision as owner to decide whether to allow it, but we also have zoning regulations that in 1997, when our wireless telecommunications services facility regulations were put into place, we identified specific limitations on the public safety site. And so the proposal would require three amendments to the regulations. One would be, currently only one cell provider is allowed on the antenna. Related requirement or prohibition is that there can't be co-location on the antenna, so if there's another provider, we would need to allow co-location. And then the, the last one is that all equipment cabinets and shelters would need to be located within the building, and, and Brian described why they are looking outside of the building. So in the staff report, we've mentioned that the, the code, this is one way the code could be amended. One, we change it to allow two cell antenna, or cell, cellular provider, providers on the tower, that we allow co-location, because there would be two, and that we would allow, with council approval, the placement of equipment cabinets and shelters outdoors. So those are the types of the amendments that we would suggest if the council is interested in moving forward. Tonight, we do need some direction. If you are interested in moving forward, our code allows either you to hold the public hearing on the zoning ordinance amendment, or to refer it to one of your advisory bodies to hold the public hearing on the text amendment. Again, the public hearing would be on the text amendment to allow this, and, and not directly on the specifics, but assume during the process the public would have questions on the specifics. As part of that process, before we would bring it to you, as Brian mentioned, there are items that they would have to demonstrate that they meet our technical requirements in the regulations, and we would review that and present a report at that public hearing in terms of how they meet those technical requirements. So with that, Brian or I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, guys. I have one question. The panel antenna. I'm looking at this picture here on page 169. Nine, thank you. Which of these would I identify as a panel antenna?
So the, on page 169, you'll see in the left diagram, it says AT&amp;T. That's going to, these are going to be, what's going to be deemed, they're calling panel antennas. Not to be confused with, like, some of the public safety antennas are like a single mast. So these are roughly, probably six, six inches wide by four or five inches deep by 72 inches tall. That's maybe a rough estimate of what they would look like based on my experience at the power plant.
Say that again?
All right, so the, the.
Hey, work off the picture, okay. So are those panel antennas?
Those are what they're calling panels. So what they're trying to make sure you understand is it's not going to be like a lightning rod type of antenna, which is just a cylinder, like a broomstick sticking up. It's going to be actually a face that's going to be probably five or six inches wide, another five or six inches thick, and probably 72 to 84 inches tall.
So those are much larger than what we're seeing here in this picture.
Those, that's actually probably not too much difference. I could go back in the old staff reports and get you a sense, but those, that's probably 66 to 72 inches what, what you're looking at right now.
Okay.
Those are, they're big, yeah.
Those are, those are that tall?
Yeah, I think they're relatively consistent. I mean, I, we could do due diligence on that if, if there was.
No, that's.
No, actually, on 164.
They're bigger than three, yeah, they're bigger than three feet.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, on 164, the scale is a little bit more discernible, so.
If you look, I know in the packet for the fourth amendment, the antennas that we, there were 72 inches tall, 19.6, I think, is one of the thicknesses in 7.8. That's what for the other work at New Singular is doing down in the exhaust stack.
So there'd be nine more of these tubes on that.
So there'd be nine more panels, yeah.
Somewhere up and down. Obviously, they, they like to be as high as they can be.
Well, they, they'll be locked into this elevation that's shown in that diagram, President Rinsel, because that would be, they're, they're not going to be able to go above the existing AT&amp;T elevation, and they're going to be reimbursing us or doing it as part of their project to remove one antenna that's no longer used and relocate. So they're, they understand that the space that's available is below, as close as they can get to, but below the AT&amp;T space on the existing monopole.
Can I, can I ask a different question?
Okay. So at this point, I'd like to just treat this conversation more like a study session than a talking ahead session. So just go at it.
Okay, I just, so just in terms of the village, I mean, I assume they want to do this because they want to improve service to village residents, and that's why we want to do it, and the technology continues to improve and change. But where you've discussed that they have antennae located on public lands are all east, right? I mean, the farthest west is at the police station. There's nothing at the refuse center, you know, there's nothing, question mark, I don't know. I mean, and I know that from experience, my cellphone, and I'll make it about me, is really bad for AT&amp;T as you go west. And I live farther west, I live by Hibbard, right? I back up. So I'm fine with doing this, but can there also be some discussion about, with the utilities, to improve the cellphone service for village at large, and that maybe they should be renting out positions west? I don't know, are, you know?
There's, there's a couple of things that may address some of your concerns. So first of all, they're, they're going to have to show a need for this as part of the, like a propagation study, to show the need for this equipment at this site. To, so before we move forward at some point in this due diligence, they're going to show a need. In regard to your question, I don't know what carriers are located there. There are what I'd call similar, what we call macro sites available that are at the Winneka Park District. So one of the structures that's, I think, in the Gulf netting is actually a cellular site. I don't know what carriers are, are they're in contracts with, but I know they have, in the past, had cellular carriers located out at the Park District facility. And then to answer your question specifically about other pockets where they are unable to locate these, what they call macro sites, the large cellular, that's why they're pursuing these small cell on top of streetlight poles and utility poles. And there's, like I said, I think previously mentioned, too, there's probably ATT, Verizon have like 10, collectively 10 to 12 sites that they're currently working on, applications and engineering designs to locate throughout the village of Winneka.
So, Brian, two questions for you. One is, was there any reason, back when the ordinance was first put in, not to allow co-location on that mast?
I can answer that.
Other, other than just optics, right? It wasn't a structural question, it was more just the look?
Yeah, I can answer that, because I was on the council when we did that. And it was, it was because the technology, everything was so much bigger at that point in time.
Okay.
So it, it was a size thing, right? And very much reacting to the technology was there at the time, because it was new. So.
Right, okay. Second question is, as the rollout of 5G gets going, is there a sense that this is going to be an integral part of 5G, or is this something that, two years from now, they're just going to pull down?
Well, they haven't shared that. I, I could ask those questions. There's two answers that'll conflict. One is, I guess, from my view, is if the council wants to do it, we would try to sync the contract term, negotiate from a position that kind of aligns with the ten, tenure of the New Singular agreement. And that I wouldn't, my recommendation would not to be like, looking at this as like a three-year agreement. We'd try to, want to lock this in if we're going to do this to some longer revenue stream, but also not to tie it down that you couldn't make changes in the future. And two is, I'm really not clear how it integrates to the 5G, because I can tell you that, and I've told them this, explained to them at like the left hand and the right hand, but there's small cell wireless facilities that they're looking at that are probably could hit with a slingshot from the public safety building. So they're courting us for a macro site, and they're using the state mandated Senate Bill 1451 to locate small cell facilities in the right, right of way, within close, fairly close, not on top of each other, but fairly close proximity. So how it all integrates from their technology, I don't know.
I, I mean, I'm supportive also, but I would also want to have a longer term, try and get as longer term as possible locked in.
So would that come up as a part of, if we approve going forward with these changes, then that would be part of, then when they actually come forward with a proposal?
Yeah, so there's kind of a couple of steps that would have to happen. So they're going to have to do due diligence on the site, but before they do the expense of a structural analysis, and there's going to be staff effort and expense to go do text amendments or to the village code, they're also going to have to do, pay to reimburse the village for propagation sites. They're going to have to be doing all these pieces, and then ultimately that would culminate, if that all fits, with a lease amendment that staff would prepare for your final approval. So this would come back to you on multiple fronts. First, there's going to be a code change required to even accommodate it. And then at some point in time, before they can construct anything, you're going to have to approve an actual agreement that would be similar, in my mind, we would recommend something similar to what you've already approved with the three, the three other sites.
Seems like the timing is good for your emergency repairs.
Yeah.
Extra money coming into the budget, I mean, yeah.
Just a quick question relative to that. I'm presuming that part of the contract is that when they no longer want to use the equipment, part of the contract is they're responsible for taking down the, and then taking away any of the equipment and structures and stuff like that?
I'm fairly sure that's a clause, but the village attorney, I'm sure, is going to make a note that he'll make sure that's in there, that any decommission costs are in there.
So Brian, just so I understand this, the pictures on page 164, that's the existing monopole or whatever?
Yeah.
That's, and we're, so, on a net basis, you're talking about seven additional net panels on that, is that right?
Yeah, I think their application in their letter, you said nine, nine.
But they're removing.
They're removing one, they're removing one, they relocate one existing one to somewhere on the pole that's acceptable to public safety, and they'll add nine.
And how many are on there right now?
Oh, boy.
Looks like three.
So, so we're going from three to 12?
No, there's more than three.
There's more than three, because I mean, you're counting, you got.
Three panels.
You got, you got the vertical panels there now, there are probably six of them or seven.
Oh, really?
There's several antennas on that site. So you've got, I think there's red center, you got multiple police department frequencies, you got New Singular.
Okay, but the panels, if you look at the panels.
The panels are these, so, and going back to, it's easier to see on the drawing, on page 169.
Yeah.
It's okay if I approach, I'll just make sure we're all on the same, pointed out.
Or maybe, yeah.
Yeah.
Is it what the cellular?
Yeah, it looks like they're.
Panel or is it a different one?
Panel, they're saying there's going to be nine.
So how many are there right now?
There's three currently.
Three.
Three, no, you got certain.
There's two are stacked, though.
Two, it was at least.
Oh, pairs, they're in pairs.
So these were.
So there's six.
Yeah.
Hey, Brian?
Two.
So I'm looking at the.
I can't really tell.
Yeah.
No.
Having your. Culture. Obviously. Yeah, so we'll have segments that.
Fly, Winneka, make a home.
It's like there's six there.
Yeah.
So we go from six to 15?
So those, what, I guess what I'm calling a panel is I'm trying to make sure you understand that it's going to be a wider front face when you're viewing it from the ground than a, let's say a broomstick handle, for lack of better words, sticking up.
Okay. All right, so let's say six, six to 15 panels, right?
Yeah.
And then where is, where's the four by four by seven box for the current structure?
Those are in, in the building. So at the power plant, they're located on the top level, they have a, like a shed, for lack of.
Oh, but where are they at the?
They're in the basement. They actually lease a locked room in the basement of the police station, and that's how, when that arrangement was constructed and with the, the building of the police department, they got, actually, New Singular leases a room from the village, a full.
And what, what is, what is that, what's that sound like in there?
Uh, well, I mean, it's full of electrical equipment, so it's like a bunch of computers. I mean, it's like walking in, imagine you have a bunch of computers, and you, so you got, obviously visually, a bunch of flashing lights and circuit boards, but you have equipment fans. I don't.
It's a server tower, it's not that loud, I mean, I've talked.
Yeah, it's not that loud. You're going to have a fan, like an equipment fan, like on your, similar to like, you know, equipment, a computer on your desktop, you're going to have a fan running for cooling. We could ask them to clarify the noise, but the stuff at the power plant, or in the time I've been in the room at the public safety building, is not what I'd call a noise, like where you're going to have a noise complaint, it's more of what's, you're going to accept visually outside on the property.
And they say they're going to install a landscaping screen to reduce the visual impact.
Yeah, so that was, that was my take to, when I talked to Chief Hornstein, is tell me what you want.
We can put shutters and windows on it and look like a playhouse.
I.
But that's, the, the landscaping is really important.
Man, that's, that's a, that's a very large structure on a fairly prominent piece of village property, actually.
Well, I guess.
Three air provides.
But that would be, that'd be part of their zoning presentation.
They'll, they'll have to, I guess, kind of taking it back, I'm, I won't dispute that, it's going to be something you're going to see, but if you think about it, is, it's not a whole lot different than utility equipment that we're required to provide to serve customers, whether it be switchgear or a pad-mounted transformer. That's, you know, if you look at the transformer that's outside, over by the bank, the drive-through lane, that's probably, it's four, four and a half feet tall, probably five feet wide and a good five feet deep. And so, I mean, it's like, it's a utility equipment cabinet.
It was seven feet tall.
This is going to be seven, but it's only going to be three. I mean, if the height is an issue, I, you know, feedback that we need would be, if there's certain components that you say, this is where we really don't want to go there, we could take that back and say, we could consider it, but we got to figure out a way to knock the height of this cabinet down and make it six feet wide, but not seven feet tall, you know, and say, can you do it? If not, it's a deal breaker.
You know, I think, excuse me, you know, the, the benefit is that unlike a lot of our equipment boxes, which are right on the parkway, and those are, you know, they're there and they're ugly, this one is set back and it's against the building more. But I think it will, I think you're right, I think it is important to consider what the options are and, and how they're going to landscape it, because if we don't have a good provision for that, I don't think the neighbors are going to be very happy. I mean, I think this is something we can accomplish, it just has to be thoughtful.
You got to keep in mind, too, it's, it's, it's in a secondary landscape area already.
Yeah.
There's landscaping along Green Bay Road.
Yep.
You've got a driveway, and then.
I agree. I mean, it's, 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 all things considered, it's a good location.
Right.
You know, it's just like.
I mean, we're not, we're not approving it tonight. We're saying, is there enough interest to have them come and present their ideas?
Well, so I think, really, what we're looking for is policy direction on whether you want us to pursue, whether you're interested in it. But then, can we move forward with pursuing the village code changes concurrently with them moving forward the design? And how do you want us to do the village code zoning relief that's required? Are we going to a lower body to work through this? Are we coming back to you?
You know, given the, I mean, I'm just weighing in with my opinion, that the process, to me, seems like it is one that should go through the lower boards, so it has plenty of time to be vetted, maybe even architectural review on the landscaping, you know, so that, so that everybody has a chance to weigh in on it, and make sure that if, if this does go forward, that we have a, a good feeling that the installation isn't going to be something that causes controversy down the line.
But I, I, I do think ultimately it is important that the council review, because there, you know, there are aspects of the public safety and, you know, telecommunications aspects, which obviously the other boards don't have the ability to, to judge.
Ultimately, the final, you know, the final approval is ours anyway, so.
Right, 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 exactly. So I, I wouldn't disagree with you on that one, in terms of the process. I would say relative to the comment that you made, in terms of the number of masts that were permitted, or the sites that were permitted previously, I, I think the reason why it was one is just there was concern that the size of the equipment would make it impossible for public safety to do what they needed to do. I'm not sure at this point, we necessarily need to put any limitation on the number of sites, because who knows what technology is going to be like in the, in the future. I mean, it's up to us to put public safety first, right? And so it may just be easier just to eliminate, limit on the number. Or is there a legal reason to, to limit it?
So, it's kind of two, it's two separate issues. So one of which is, you know, because you are the property owner.
Right.
You have the ability, in whatever agreement you do, to establish, say, regardless of what the zoning says, we're, we're happy with only one, even the zoning code says you could have five, we only want one. And you do not have any obligation to ever grant on your own property additional carriers or sites, or if somebody doesn't meet your landscaping requirements. So the zoning issue is a separate issue, and think of zoning this way. What the, what a, the plan commissioner or ZBA would be looking at is not, per se, the landscaping, and not, per se, the contractual terms. That will be addressed more in the, you know, in any type of agreement that comes before this body. They'd be looking strictly at the text amendment language, whether if you want to say, should we have only two sites, or four, or whatever number you're going to have. And the idea here that, the, if you look at the, what was drafted by David Shown. here that, the, if you look at the, what was drafted by David Schoen, things like, should the, should the council provide exceptions that say that an equipment cabinet can be provided outside of the building? Is that a good idea or a bad idea to have that in the code? So they're not going to, they, you know, while in the back of their mind, they may be thinking about the landscaping, they're focusing on the number and the location of that, of the cabinet, that it should be exterior versus interior. So their, their charge will be very limited.
How, how would they consider the number? I mean, why would that be their, the zoning board's concern?
Because that's what the text amendment is proposed at the moment. Now, if you, if you, if you want to eliminate a number.
Yeah.
And leave it open-ended, you certainly could do so. And so if that's, if the proposed text amendment, and I believe this language came more from the village.
Right.
Than it did from the cell carrier.
Right.
We could present, you know, for the public hearing, elimination of the number, and then it's going to be for the site, from a zoning perspective, whatever, you know, it could, you know, you don't need one.
Yeah, I mean.
And that's fine, and then it would be up to the contractual limitation if you want to do it that way.
Okay.
It seems to me, and I appreciate the input of zoning, but I don't, I don't understand what their unique input would be. It's either we want to do it on the site or we don't. I think the design input would be really good on the landscaping, but on the zoning, just.
It's much more of a policy question.
It is, and then ultimately it comes to us anyway.
I, I agree that, you know, maybe having a design review, take a look at the, the external technology, housing.
Because this zoning provision is specific to this property. If, if it was applicable to other sites in the village, I think it would make perfect sense to have it go to zoning, because it's a broader issue, but this is this property that the village controls and.
Yeah, being that it's village property and a utility, is there any way just to have an approval process go through us and that's it?
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I would think, let's keep things simple if we can.
Would, would there be a merit though to having design review?
Look at the landscaping.
If, if there's a prominent spot on a corner of like entry to Winnetka maybe, like I'm saying, secondary, you don't, you see that spot from the street now probably.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking of past history, and I do know that there's a sensitivity to the public safety building, it's middle presidential neighborhood.
You know, but there's people that live across the street, so, you know, we, we do owe it to, to those people to at least make sure that we're putting best, best efforts.
It's where it can be, you know, for our provider.
mitigating impact.
Well, the other question is, you know, maybe there are alternatives, maybe the company has alternatives to a seven-foot-tall building.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with pursuing, you know, taking back to the comments I'm hearing is the eighty-four inch cabinet's too tall, what are, is there anything else that can go in and address your equipment needs? Is, what's a, we need some maybe more definition around the panel size, because their, their response didn't really give us that, and maybe there could be a photo sim prepared on what it would look like. So I think, good questions, I guess, our fear and the applicants or the requesters' fear was, all those things come with a cost, including staff time, and if there's no desire to pursue it, I just would prefer to kindly say, thank you for your inquiry, we're going to move, you need to move on. If there's some general consensus that you want to move forward, we'll go back to them and say, we need the, you need to flush this out a little more, there's some general belief that the council could find a way to accept it, but we need to know, can we get the eighty-four knocked down? What are you thinking about landscaping, and what's the panel size going to be, and can we get like a photo sim of what you might be putting on the tower?
Brian, just to be clear, I'm okay with the cabinet height, and I'm okay with them putting it on there, I just would like to see some thought put into the landscaping that would be appropriate for it, so.
Unless they can easily instead of a eighty-four inch cabinet, do two forty-twos, then now you've got a wider footprint.
Right.
So.
Yeah, it just, it depends on what.
If they have options, I'd like to hear those options, but otherwise.
I think the bottom line is, we're interested in.
I don't think it's a non-starter.
Yeah, and I think we're interested in making it simple.
I, I don't think the eighty-four is a non-starter though.
Yeah.
Maybe it is for you.
But I just think it's big and it should be dead, we should see if there's something better.
It's worth pushing back, I guess is really what the, what the message is there. Yeah, I don't have a problem keeping it in the council, I just, I, I think, you know, making sure that we give proper consideration to the, to the across-the-street neighbors is a pretty important part of this as well.
I, I completely agree, you know, based on, again, just past history, that, that I think it's important that we understand their concerns, and I think that we should, personally, I think the DRB is definitely a good idea, if it doesn't, if it's sort of irrelevant for zoning, that doesn't, and I certainly don't think the plan commission has.
One point I'd like to make too, is if I'm ATT, I'm rooting for the village council to tell them no.
On that point though, I mean, I think competition is important, and why would we preference one carryover another, and I, so I feel a responsibility, and a lot of people have Verizon also, I don't, but, so I, I'm in favor of going forward and, and trying to spec out what it would look like, and I think it's a service, an infrastructure investment for the community that the community doesn't have to make.
And I think part of your, part of your eighty-four inches, when I look at Google Earth, there's that brick retaining wall, as you go down the ramp to get under the building, the other side of that looks like it's maybe three feet lower grade.
Oh.
So you may only see the top three feet or three and a half feet, at least that's what I, I think I see, so.
It's, it's, so if you're looking at it from one direction, it's, you're at grade of the parking lot, when you look at it from the front, because you got your, the driveway going down, the wall does stick up probably two and a half feet above the landscaped area from, when you're looking off of Green Bay Road.
You're already starting lower by that amount.
So you guys hearing what you need to hear?
Yeah, I think, I, yeah, I think we're good. The answer is not no, pull some more detail together and probably a trip to the design review board.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks. Thank you, navigate the, I'm paying the price for my own cleverness. Oh.
You did it.
I did it. Okay, next item up is item eight C, which is resolution number R seven twenty nineteen, authorizing village sponsorship of the Winnetka Music Festival, which is up for adoption. The village is being asked to sponsor the twenty nineteen Winnetka Music Festival, which has been a great success in the past two years, and here to present is trustee Scott Myers. Scott, take it away.
Yeah, so we're back for the, for the third time of what has become, hopefully, a very exciting summer event. You know, I think just a couple points about twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. When we launched this, the whole idea was that this was going to be a, a real collaboration, a collaboration between the chamber, the village, and the community, and I think that's what we've really seen, and, and, you know, we've got fifteen, actually more like twenty of a core team of volunteers that have been providing everything from marketing expertise to, you know, food truck expertise, obviously music expertise. When the event happens, this past year, we actually had more than two hundred and fifty volunteers. One of the other things I wanted to point out, and I wanted Brian to stay here, is that, you know, I wanted to point out the incredible support from, from the village, from all the departments in the village, you know, in terms of what Steve and the, and the public works folks do, you know, every time I call Brian, I think he now laughs at, you know, what new idea I'm going to have in terms of where can we get power, but he always seems to get it there. And obviously, you know, with the, with the police and fire, I think that, you know, not only do they provide great support, but I think one of the things that, you know, they, they really get a kick out of being out in the community and, and talking to the residents and getting a lot of positive feedback. So it has just been a great, you know, just a great partnership with the village, and so I wanted Brian to stay here so I could compliment on his new hairstyle, and also thank him for. Yeah. We've gotten a lot of media exposure from the event, not only news articles, but also.
They said the same thing to me, Brian.
Yeah.
It's a rough crowd, hang in there.
But also, you know, we, we get a lot of, a lot of hits on the website, you know, so, so in terms of promoting Winnetka, it's, it's been a big success on that front, and then, you know, I never would have guessed, three years ago when I came to Rob with this idea, that we'd be looking at a second year where we had some fourteen thousand people attending. So it has been a huge success, and, you know, we got a little bit of attribution, a little bit of support from Make It Better, who named us the best music fest in the suburbs, so after only two years, it's not too bad to, to achieve that. I think you all know the format, twenty-four hours of music starting on Friday, and then going through Saturday night, located in the East Elm Business District, and I'll, I'll come back to that, because that's a little bit of a change this year. One other thing I do want to highlight, going back to this idea of it's part of a community, one of the things that we're doing this year is working with District Thirty-Six. We got a call from the folks at Skokie School, they have a, three different periods during the year called the Inquiry Period, which are two, it's a two-week period where classes take on a project and work on a real-world idea. So this year, we're actually working with a group of fifth and sixth graders around how to market the family stage. So they're digging in and saying, what ideas do we want there, you know, how do we market this? And so it's, you know, becoming a nice learning experience where they're also taking ownership for, for part of the festival, so just, you know, part of kind of broadening the, the engagement of the, of the community. Couple changes this year. One is we're consolidating, and if you have to head back to Egypt, Brian, feel, you know, I know, it's a long, it's a long trip. So don't feel, you have to stay for the whole thing. So I will talk about power requirements once, once you leave. We're consolidating on the east side of Green Bay Road, you know, there's, there haven't been any problems, but obviously there's been, obviously a safety concern each year as we've crossed, have had patrons crossing on Green Bay Road, you know, police have handled that quite well, so that's one factor. The other factor is, you know, it's a big physical space, and it's become physically exhausting to try and, and manage all that, so consolidation on the east side, I think, gives us enough space as well as, you know, makes it a little bit easier to manage. We'll be moving the family stage into the, into the village green, and you'll see we're adding, we're going to add a few more twists and things here, you'll see silent disco up there, I'm sure, you know, I'm, I'm very disappointed that the council members don't know what silent disco is.
I do.
It's the hottest phrase. But, but so one of our sponsors is, is paying for this. Silent disco is, you put on wireless headphones, there are three different channels, you two, you can turn to three different styles of music, and then we'll have a dance area set up right next to the, on the grass area, right next to the community house. So it'll be like a, it will be like a disco, it'll be very humorous to watch, because no one hears the music except for the people that are there, so it's, but it's, you know, it'll be another fun, you know, family activity, as well as we think the teenagers will kind of gravitate to that. So that, that should be a lot of fun.
You're going to have Scott make.
Yeah, we're just trying to keep on the, on the leading edge here. One of the other things that is a change is, I think due to our success, you know, and that deals with the, the financial and organizational sustainability of the event. The first two years, it pretty much was, you know, the chamber stepping forward and saying, yeah, we'll be the fiscal agent here, and you can kind of be under our umbrella. But if there'd been any financial problems, if there'd been any legal problems, the chamber is not set up to handle those kinds of things, and I think a lot of, any financial problems would have fallen on potentially individuals in the, in the community. Also, from a, just a legal point of view of who really owns the festival, that, you know, that, that also was, you know, we all kind of were working together, but it wasn't necessarily really clearly defined. So a couple things that have really kind of forced us to, to rethink this. One is, you know, you look at the expenses, you look at the revenue, and you go, ah, we're making a little bit of money, but the revenue has really been dependent on, on two things. One is, there's a group of patrons, a group of individuals in the town who have kind of stepped up and said, you know, this is something that we really like, and we're willing to contribute some of our money, you know, a couple thousand dollars to, to make this happen. And that, that accounts for some fifteen percent or so of our revenue. And the other one is beer and wine sales, right? That's a quarter of what we, of what revenue has come in. If there was a rainy day, if it was a kind of a coldish day where we didn't have people coming out, that revenue would disappear, and we just can't count on individuals in this town saying, yes, I'm going to give two thousand dollars a year, every year. So, you know, we've got a little bit of money in the bank, but we need to come up with a more sustainable financial model, and then a more sustainable organization model. So one of the things we've now done is Val's List, so Val Haller, who's been the music curator, has a LLC, Val's List is taking on the responsibility for running the festival, so legally they will be the ones accountable for the bills and accountable from a liability point of view. So that clears it up, the chamber will still be closely involved, and still will be the ones handling the, the special event permit and working with us on the business side, and the village obviously will hopefully also stay involved. But the other thing that we're going to do then from a financial point of view is really ask the individuals who attend the Saturday night headliner, the final two acts, to support the festival. And we've got multiple levels of support, we continue with the VIP area and the VIP tickets there, we continue to have street pole banners that people can provide, but one of the things we are going to ask this year is that individuals who attend the final two headliners pay twenty dollars. So you'll hear the final three hours of music for, you know, for twenty bucks to get into the, the community house parking lot. And, you know, that provides another more stable source of revenue, if people for some reason can't do that, you know, all the other music Friday night and all day Saturday is free, they can continue to, you know, make use of the whole Lincoln Avenue food and beverage area and refreshment area, but this just provides a little bit more stability, you know, so that the festival can continue. And so I think, you know, we've got obviously a unique event here, it seems to be really taking off not only here in town, but also around the North Shore. Once again, we've got, you know, a pretty strong group of, of corporate sponsors that have stepped forward, but as I, you know, as I saw on the previous slide, that just accounts for just a little over fifty percent of the revenue, and we need to make up the difference. So that's pretty much where we're headed, and hopefully we'll have the continued support of, of the village. Happy to handle any questions.
I'm sorry. It's, so if, for the, the final night, the last two acts, so if you choose not to make a contribution, you don't get in, I mean, it's a ticket price really.
I mean, so in working with the fire chief.
Yeah.
We have a limited space, we can fit five thousand people in there.
Right.
Right? We're going to sell tickets, people who buy a ticket will get a wristband, if you get a wristband, you get in first. If the, if the area is packed and the fire department says, no more people, you're right, then you, you don't get in without a wristband.
Oh, oh, okay, so people still potentially could, I mean, so I guess my question is a contribution, or is it, it's, it's, is it an absolute interest?
It's a, look, if there's, as people wander in and out, if there's not five thousand people there, we are not, we're not making this a hard and fast rule. The message is basically, this is your festival, if you want this festival to survive, we need your support, right? And we need, we're asking everyone to give twenty dollars to try and allow this festival to survive. And I guess this will be an indication also this year if the, if the village really does want it or not.
Can I follow up, just, how much are Ravigna Lawn tickets these days? Just curious.
Oh, I'm thinking they're thirty-five or forty dollars.
Okay.
Are they higher now? Wow, okay.
Depends on the show.
Yeah.
Okay, so they're.
Symphony is cheap.
Symphony is cheap, rock and roll is not cheap. Okay, and then are they going to be able to preorder their twenty-dollar tickets?
Yes, they will, and, and so a couple points, the, we'll announce the headliners in the middle of February. These headliners, any one of these bands, people tend to pay forty dollars downtown to hear one band. So people will be getting two bands for half that price. The, the plan we're working on right now is next Friday, the eighteenth, we'll have a new website go up, there will be a ticketing site, people will go on the ticket, on the ticketing site, they can pay for it there, they'll get an E, just like any venue, you'll get a QR code that will be your ticket, a week before the fest, you'll get a confirmation with the ticket information again, and then we'll have tents around the festival area where people will go up, show their QR code, get scanned, get their wristbands, and then they're good, you know, they're good for the festival.
Is there a means of if you don't want to be a sponsor and buy whatever, but you want to give more than the twenty dollars or whatever, I mean, are, are you providing I mean, are, are you providing opportunities for people to do that?
Yeah, so there's actually six different levels, starting from people buying VIP tickets, right? A VIP ticket would be $150, there's the special VIP area that we had last year, will, will be enhanced this year. There's family VIP passes, we recognize that people have kids, so, you know, we're pricing that, so that, you know, adults can afford to bring their kids in. You can get a street pole banner with VIP tickets, you can buy just the individual $20 general admission ticket, there's family passes there also. And then we also do have a patron level, where, you know, at $1,000, people get VIP, you know, four VIP tickets, a street pole banner, they get recognition, we'll have a sign-up thanking individuals who've given that much, and, and, so we are trying to, to recognize that there is a broad range of both people who are, who really want to keep this thing going, and can contribute, to those who just want to come and enjoy the music and can afford 20 bucks.
You know, and people may just want to drop five bucks and do a bucket through the course of the day, so, you know, what the heck, right?
Yeah, yeah, buy an extra beer ticket.
Yeah, just make it out of the option available.
So, Scott, great job, you know, you're really moving this ball forward. Just clarification on the, the ownership, if you will, of the fest now, is, is Val's List the owner of the fest? They've taken on the liability, I guess?
So, ownership, so, so Val's List owns the trademark, okay? The fest can't happen without the village and the chamber and Val's List? So, in terms of, you know, could, could somebody pick this festival up and just move it to another place in town? No, right? Because, so, so in terms of ownership, I guess I would view it as, who owns the, the logo, the trademark, right, of the Winnetka Music Festival? And that would be Val's List.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking more, what, what you did, you had to resolve this liability issue, the financial liability issue, or other liability.
Yeah.
Are you saying that that has now been shifted...
To Val's List.
To Val's List.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, and, and if there's, if the festival is profitable, which hopefully is...
Got help with? Yeah, yeah.
Does that go to Val's List?
Uh, yeah, well, the money is shared with the chamber. The chamber gets a, gets a fee every year. Um, but, yeah, at this point, so, in the first two years, if we made $10,000 each year, yeah, technically, that would be Val's List.
Well, if they take the risk, they should...
Yeah.
Receive the profit.
Yeah.
So, so along with that, Val's List taking control, will they give an insurance policy that's given to the village?
So, the insurance, so the village is a co-insured on the liability. So, there's a general liability, as well as a liquor liability, and the, the Park District, the chamber, the village are all co-insured on that policy.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay?
Great job, Scott, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Look forward to another fun summer event.
Yeah.
And thank you for all your hard work keeping this thing going.
What, what's the date, Scott?
Oh, June 21st and 22nd, after Father's Day weekend.
That's after Father's Day weekend?
It's the weekend after Father's Day.
Last year.
Yeah, it was, yeah, so we moved it.
Okay, would, would anybody from the audience like to speak or comment on this issue? And Terry says no, except thumbs up. Okay. Okay, we'll bring it back up here, then. May I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number R7 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Can I have a question first?
Whoop.
Do we need anything changed on the actual resolution to have Val's List has the name on there? No?
I don't think so.
So, the chamber is the one requesting this, they request the special event permit, they're the ones that, in a sense, are hosting the event, they're hiring Val's List to execute the event.
Okay, all right, good, thanks. Sorry.
That's okay.
Good question.
So, we had a motion, and do we have a second?
We have a second.
Okay, then we can move ahead and roll call vote.
Okay. Trustee Lanfier.
Yep.
Trustee Wedner.